Well, thank you very much for joining us here in the Montclair City Council chambers for this meeting. I just got back from a trip in Central Coast, that's where I'm a little casual right now. Nevertheless, we will begin the meeting with the invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'll ask that the city clerk please introduce those two individuals.
Okay, the invocation is scheduled to be given by Pastor Leo Smith of Love Sanctuary Church, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Mayor Pro Tem Johnson. And is Pastor Smith in the audience?
Pastor Smith here. If not, then we'll ask if Councilmember Bill Rue will not mind leading us in the invocation. Please stand.
Please join with me. By an gracious creator of heaven and earth, of all that is visible and invisible, of all the world around us, and of everybody we meet, we are in trying times. We see around us a lack of civility and violence. Lead us to better pastures, lead us to a course of civility, nonviolence. Let us, if we have differences, resolve those differences in a way that fosters unity, that fosters thoughtfulness, and that fosters the opportunity to understand other points of view. On these days when it's been very hot, many of our families are struggling, let us as individuals, as people who are gathered here, and as a community, always remember the last, the least, the lost, and the lonely. May they be a priority for us so that we can help and move them forward in our community. Help us to make a good decision tonight. Most of all, watch over everyone who calls this community home, whether they're a visitor, a resident, or someone who works here. Watch over them, keep them safe, and help each of us to become better in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Lopez.
I'm here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember Rue.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
I'm here.
And Mayor Dutre.
Present. Thank you. So we will now do presentations this evening. We have two. We'll begin with the first presentation to recognize an outgoing Community Activities Commissioner, and that is the name of Alex Hernandez. And I know Alex is in the audience, so I'm going to ask my councilmembers to join me. Before I do that, maybe I'll do this. I'd like to take a moment to thank Community Activities Commissioner Alex Hernandez for his eight years of service to this great city of Montclair. Throughout the years, he has been involved with the commission. He has assisted with countless events and projects, including the annual volunteer recognition program, the Easter extravaganza event, community benefits funding program, Memorial Day activity, home beautification program, Halloween spectacular holiday home decoration contest, and of course, the Holiday Jolly holiday event. Mr. Hernandez, we appreciate everything that you do for the commission, obviously for the community of Montclair, and we want to say this, so you'll be truly missed. We wish you the best on your future endeavors. We would like to present you this evening with some stuff, so I'm going to come down here with the council, and we'll do the second part. So at this evening, we're going to reckon, I'll give you a couple things here. I'm going to walk over here now. We're going to give you a certificate to recognize your hard work with the commission, the Community Activities Commission, and then you get one of these famous plaques. Put that someplace special, and in your house. I want to ask that the CAC members join me. All of it, right behind you. Let's get them up here, too. Come on up, you can spread up on both sides here. And of course, I know Hector's here, too. You're a commissioner. Come on up, Hector. Where's Hector? He's being shy. Come on over here, Hector. Yes, we'll do the introduction, he's in here in a second. I'm going to go on this side here, we'll balance it all out. Thank you, Hector.
I, what I started doing is in 2016, I just, I had a lot of free time, and I just wanted to get involved, and I didn't think it was going to be anything like this. I thought I'd just show up and help, but it was a really great experience. I met some of the most wonderful people I've ever met in my life, and I think helping others really fulfills you, and I think I got that here. So I just want to say thank you for the opportunity, and I'm just humbled by this. I was expecting this, I don't have, that was just a shout out, so I think this is far what I expected, so thank you, Marsha, and the mayor, and the city council, and my fellow CAC members. Thank you guys so much. Love you guys. Thanks.
I would like to first recognize both Diane Wells and Arturo Padilla. They're here. They just got reappointed for a new four-year term. Congratulations to you both. I want to recognize Hector, who's being shy in the back. Hector Martinez, could you please stand, Hector? Hector's our newest commissioner, and welcome aboard to the commission. So now we'll continue on, and I'm now going to introduce our vice chairperson Darlene Ferraro. This is for the, our home beautification awards, and so Darlene, can you please come
Thank you, Mayor Dutre. For the past twenty-five, twenty-nine years, the Community Activities Commission has sponsored the Home Beautification Program to recognize Montclair residents who demonstrate their community pride through the upkeep and maintenance of their homes. This year sixteen homes were nominated by members of the Community Activities Commission and the City of Montclair's Community Development Department. There were two judging categories, traditional landscape and drought tolerant landscape. One winner was selected in each category. We will be showing you a PowerPoint presentation of our winning homes accompanied by a brief description. As you will see, the winners should be very proud of the work they have done to maintain their homes and property. Each winner will receive a frame certificate and a gift card to a Montclair restaurant or business of their choice. Later, they will also receive a sign to be placed in their front yard announcing their Our first honored winners are Alejandro and Sonia Rieger, whose home is located at 4641 Highland Street. Alejandro and Sonia are previous winners of the Holiday Home Decoration Contest, receiving awards in 2003, 2008, and 2013. Alejandro and Sonia have lived in their home for thirty years and truly take pride in their home. They enjoy keeping their yard nice so that they are able to relax and enjoy the greenery and the view of the San Gabriel Mountain Range from their yard. The Riegers' home is full of pleasant surprises around every bend that are sure to delight any who pass by. Any passerby is sure to stop and stare at the bright pink bougainvillea that lines the Riegers' front fence. The arch that the vines have formed was grown completely naturally and began growing into the shape while the Riegers were away on vacation. While approaching the home, you are greeted with the soft sound of wind chimes and a rock pathway leading you to the front door. The serene entrance is complete with a statue of a young soccer player sitting by an inviting As you approach the front door, you will find a small succulent garden in an antique water fountain. Next to the fountain is a shaded bench covered by a vine archway where Alejandro and Sonia spend plenty of time looking at the beautiful views of the yard and the mountains ahead. Personalized rocks and plaques surround a perfectly manicured Sagal palm tree. To the left of the front porch is the main attraction, which sits in the center of Alejandro and Sonia's front yard. In the middle of the lush St. Augustine grass, you will find a bed of lava rock that holds hidden treasures, including a dry riverbed made of rock, complete with a bridge. You can also find a Pooh Bear statue amongst the succulents and small greenery, and a concrete alligator lurking underneath the shade of trees. The Riegers' yard is also full of different varieties of plants, including various succulents, as well as a large palm tree which towers over their yard, offering shade to all plants it covers. The Riegers' motivation to create a green yard comes from their love of Costa Rica, Alejandro's home country. The Riegers love plants and enjoy being able to relax in the oasis they have created. Their hard work shows in every inch of their yard, and the plans for the yard are not yet finished, as their aim is to conserve more water. Congratulations to Alejandro and Sonia Rieger for winning the 2024 Traditional Home of the Year Award. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. One, two. 9553 Helena Avenue. Jean has lived in her home for fifty-seven years. Five years ago, she began the beautification of her home, and very quickly, the drought tolerant plants began to grow into what they are today. As you walk on the sidewalk in front of Jean's home, you will see a dry riverbed filled with sand, along with beds of gravel out front. The easement is also decorated with the same color gravel as the front yard. The sand is impeccably lined with cement that curves and flows, creating an inviting entrance to Jean's yard. All plants are precisely manicured and look well established. As you enter the driveway, you are surrounded by plants perfect for all of our pollinators. Near the front door, there are also inviting orange kangaroo paws that help the home blend into the rest of the yard. Jean explained that all these plants bloom even brighter in the spring. When you step inside the river, the dry river, you escape to a hidden paradise with vibrant shrubs and bushes that camouflage and protect the front of the home. The perfectly placed rocks in the dry river can almost make you believe that somewhere in the mountains, that you are somewhere in the mountains or a botanical garden instead of a front yard. Throughout the yard, you will find meticulously planted shrubs and plants, including fox tails, butterfly plants, yellow lantanas, Prince Tut plants, and Texas Rangers. Jean specifically added plenty of these plants to attract birds, butterflies, and bees. She takes pride in her home and her yard, and helping create a safe place for pollinators to visit. Congratulations to Jean Beer for winning the 2024 Drought Tolerant Home of the Year Award.
Congratulations, Jean.
I just want to say that this is the great opportunity in this room that we can showcase what our residents are doing to their home to beautify it. So again, I want to congratulate the two homeowners on these, being the winners of the annual home beautification program. Obviously, your hard work is evident in your home appearance and your appreciation of our great city. In addition, thank you to all the residents who contributed to the beautification of Montclair, including those who submitted nominations, and your dedication is what makes, is what helps to keep Montclair a great city in which we live in. So again, thank you very much. I want to recognize the Community Activities Commission as well, and thank you for all your hard work on the judgment of this program. So with that, we're done with this portion of the program.
I'm sorry to recognize you from distance, so.
That's okay. I gave it a few pounds, but that's all right.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, before he leaves, I really want to thank Commissioner Hernandez for all the time he's put into the commission. He's a young man who lives and breathes this community. He's been involved in everything, and good luck to you, and continue to come to our events. Thanks.
Okay, as the crowd walks out, we'll give a couple more minutes. Okay, thank you. Now we'll get down to the public comment portion of the agenda. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address, address the city council on any items that are not on agenda, or any of the consent calendar business items we have on the agenda. You have five minutes, and then I'll have the city clerk introduce any requests to speak.
Yes, I have one request from Susan Elias.
Okay.
Kind of ironic that you guys are giving away the Best Looking House Awards today, when I'm here to complain about one of the worst looking houses. I'm here today to bring up a matter of concern for several residents regarding the neighbors at 9775 Coalinga Avenue. We have called the police and code enforcement numerous times for excessive and repeated code violations over the years. To this date, nothing has been done, and we're here tonight to officially get it on record. As homeowners, we expect to be able to live in a clean, quiet, and safe neighborhood. What good are the COs and code sections in the city if the city does nothing to enforce them? The most recent violations include a box truck over 10,000 pounds that has been taking up residential parking since April 10th in violation of city code; a trailer with jet skis that is left sitting on the street with no attached vehicle overnight in front of other neighbors' homes; a trailer that is left out on the street with no attached vehicle and with family members living in it. California Vehicle Code states that recreation or utility trailers that are not attached to a tow vehicle may be temporarily parked on the street or alley for any purpose for a period not to exceed seventy-two hours pursuant to a permit issued by the police department, which must be prominently displayed on the trailer, none of which is on this trailer right now. These neighbors have made the neighborhood an eyesore with numerous cars and trucks parking all over the street, as well as loud noise from the box truck driving up and down the street at all hours of the day and night. Plus, the owner has backed the truck into his own wall multiple times, damaging it, and often pulls into a neighbor's driveway, which damages it, too, because it's over 10,000 pounds. They have at least one rooster in the backyard that is constantly crowing, and we have a code section in the city that roosters are not allowed, noisy animal code. On the Fourth of July, the police were called several times to the property due to setting off illegal aerial fireworks. Everything was recorded on video, but nothing was done. They stopped as soon as officers arrived on the scene, but when officers left, they immediately started setting off more fireworks, endangering every single resident on the street. This went on for at least three hours, which left debris in other yards, which is a fire hazard. Several calls and emails have been sent regarding the box truck, most recently on June 28th, for illegal parking in the residential area. The officer came out and called, saying the box truck wasn't illegally parked. I replied that city code forbids any vehicle over 10,000 pounds to be parked on residential streets. The officer said she'd call me back in a few, and I never heard another word about it. The truck is still being parked on the street, taking up multiple parking spaces, causing them to park their five to six other vehicles in front of other neighbors' houses, leaving no parking for those residents in front of their own homes. Several calls have also been made to code enforcement, but no response or update or evidence of anything being done. So like I said, perfect timing with the best looking houses.
Well, thank you. What's the address again?
9775 Coalinga.
Okay, thank you. And City Manager Starr, can you look into this and see what's going on, and if any violations are occurring? I realize sometimes city staff will have ongoing cases, it just takes time to clear it out, but if you can log into it, I appreciate it.
Yes, I will do that.
Thank you.
It came out three times before he finally moved his jet skis from in front of the neighbor's house.
Thank you.
Okay, no more cards.
Thank you. Okay, so we will now go down to consent calendar items, and we will begin with my left. Anybody on my left who wished to pull an item off the agenda?
No, not me.
No? How about my right? Anybody on my right?
C4.
C4, okay. C4.
C4.
Okay, we've got C4. Anybody else on my right?
I also would like to pull C4, but I also like to pull C3 for purposes of an abstention.
Okay, C3 is for abstention. Okay, so we'll start with item C4, then. So Mr. Councilmember Rue, if you'd like to start with C4?
Yes, in looking at this, I am trying to determine specifically, is this just the administrative offices? From what I'm reading, that seems to be...
Yes, it is not going to be the church.
Okay. I just want to make sure because of zoning and things of that sort. So if this is just the administrative offices, not the church, that's fine. I'm not opposed to the church, but I want to make sure there's the appropriate zoning. So that's the only question I had. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Rue. I'm Councilmember Lopez.
Yeah, I had a question with respect to a statement in the staff report on page 57, and then there being a discrepancy in the actual contract. I'm trying to find it. In the staff report on the third bullet point, it states, and I'm just going to go mid-sentence, accompanying the city's special operations unit on homeless outreach detail a minimum of four times per week, and then it continues. So there's a stipulation based on the staff report that it'll happen, or the church or the entity will agree to accompany our staff four times per week. However, in the contract, page nine, I'm sorry, page 76 of our staff report, Exhibit C, Bullet Point A, it states that they will accompany the city's special operations unit, et cetera, et cetera, a minimum of 25 hours per week. So 25 hours per week can be divvied up any amount of time, given a certain day, and let's just say they put in 10 hours on a Monday, 10 hours on a Tuesday, and then the remaining five rest of the week. I think that is technically contrary to the staff report, saying that they must engage and assist our staff four times per week. I just want there to be a clarification that if, is there flexibility for them to meet that 25-hour obligation? Or am I misreading it? Instead of four times per week, I'm just assuming it's four days of the week?
Well, they are both correct. Excuse me. They're both correct. They do need to be out with code enforcement, special enforcement team at least four days a week, which would be in conjunction with the city's work schedule. In addition to that, of, over the course of the four days, they have to provide a minimum of 25 hours of service. So you're correct, they could build up the hours on a particular day and reduce the hours on another day, but really, this is driven by the need of the special enforcement team more than it is by the time commitment that the organization wants to commit. So it has to be 25 hours minimum per week, but they do have to be out with the special enforcement team four days a week.
So they could be there three days, one day, I'm sorry, three hours, one day, eight, 12 the other?
Based on the needs of the special enforcement team.
Now, is, are they to be, for lack of a better word, are they to be at the whim of our staff when needed, or let's say they're in the process of something else, conducting their operations, must they drop everything and assist our staff, or can they say, "I'm sorry, we're in the process of another project"? What's the exact agreement?
Well, they are on demand response in that particular case. If they're not out with the special enforcement team, then they are called in when they are needed, and typically, they are available to provide responses because they have a number of people who are working for set-free minutes. of people who are, uh, working for Set Free Ministry. Uh, we don't envision that there would be an issue where they're not available, but if they aren't, uh, that's okay, we can, uh, code enforcement will continue to work with the individual out in the field until, uh, the outreach team can arrive.
I, I just wouldn't want them deemed, uh, for not being able to assist on a particular call. I just want that flexibility for them. Also, um, given that we're talking about a church operation, uh, the staff that will be manning the new, um, office there on Central, are we talking staff that are somehow have specialty in, um, drug abuse, homeless engagement, or, I mean, do they have clinical technicians on their staff, or are these volunteers?
It's the regular staff of Set Free Ministry who has training in these areas.
Okay, great, that's good to hear. All right, my questions have been addressed. Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you very much. I, I want to, uh, compliment the importance of, uh, this item here with Set Free Church, and I've dealt with, uh, dealt with them through our code enforcement division, Pastor Robb, obviously he's the leader of that. Uh, they have done a great job for us here in Montclair, um, these last few years, and they are being committed to, uh, not just this city, but also committed to, to, to assist in the homeless, especially the chronic homeless, uh, population, um, that's in Montclair. And Pastor Robb, that's the leader of this, he at one point was also homeless, dealing with substance abuse, and he was able to turn his life around, so he's got a great deal of experience in this field here. So I am excited that we have this. This is definitely needed. I know how flexible they are. They are available, uh, for the most part, seven days a week, uh, so even during the weekends, uh, staff sees them, they will be able to go out and assist, um, any homeless issues in Montclair. So I want to say again, I'm very excited about this. This is a high priority issue in, not just in the city of Montclair, this is a high priority issue among many cities, based on my discussions with mayors and other officials in our region. So if there's no other discussion, can I get a motion for approval with exception of item C three?
I'll make a motion for the consent calendar as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I just would like to request a separate vote on, um...
Yeah, with the exception of item C three, I think I said that. So it's seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, and so we will go ahead and vote on this, please. That's five zero. And then with the same two persons making the motion, kind of, we will now, uh, vote on, um, item C three, noting the abstention or recusing of Councilmember Lopez.
And I'd like to preface that abstention by stating I have a, uh, I've entered into a contract with the major competitor of Blaze and Associates, and although I have not received compensation for, uh, the last calendar year, I'd still like to, uh, abstain.
That's up, up to approve four zero one abstention by Councilmember Lopez. Accuse himself, not abstention, accuse him. We will now go to communications and we will start with department reports. And does the chief want to start, lead off, and regarding National Night Out? And I don't know if you can briefly talk about, uh, Fourth of July enforcement, if you're prepared to do that or not, not, maybe a separate communication.
Sure. That's, good afternoon, or good evening, council, city staff, City Manager Starr. It's time once again, uh, for our National Night Out, scheduled for Tuesday, August sixth, 2024, from 6:30 PM to 10:00 PM, located, of course, at Alma Hoffman Park. Uh, National Night Out is a community police awareness raising event in the United States, held the first Tuesday of August normally. The event has been held annually since 1984 and is sponsored by the National Association of Town Watch in the United States and Canada. The event is meant to increase awareness about police programs in communities such as drug prevention, neighborhood watch, and other anti-crime efforts. The Montclair Fire Department and Montclair Police Department will be on hand to speak with the public, allow children and their parents, if they wish, the opportunity to see and handle some of our, uh, the tools of the trade. Local government representatives and nonprofits will have booths set up to engage with members of our community. Also, the American Red Cross will be set up for blood donations at the senior center from 2:00 PM to 8:00 PM on that same day. We'll have a free photo booth with free face painting for the kids, as well as giveaways such as coloring books, crayons, fingerprint ID kits. Food and sweet treats will be available for purchase. Um, and this year, we did something a little bit different on our, uh, social media page. We conducted a survey for which movie the children and the adults would like to watch, and overwhelmingly, Top Gun Maverick was selected. So I think maybe the parents had something to say with that too, but children do love that movie. And so the movie starts at about 8:15 PM. We do ask, as the sun goes, goes down, don't leave your wingman with this. Sorry, sorry. National Night Out is a great chance to reach out and interact with communities we serve. Uh, please pass the word and feel free to join us for that, that fun event.
Right.
Um, as far as, as, as far as the Fourth of July, um, as discussed at the last meeting, we conducted several, um, enforcement, um, item, or, or some enforcement activity, especially on the illegal sales, which we secured over 700 pounds of illegal fireworks and dangerous fireworks, explosive fireworks. Um, on the calls for service for, uh, on the night of the Fourth were similar for nights before, uh, or I'm sorry, from years before, we received, received approximately, um, I believe sixty-nine to seventy-nine calls for service. I don't have those numbers exactly in, in front of me, but we did respond to all calls for service, including area checks for noises heard, and we did issue several, um, um, of the notifications to residents where by the time we, we, if a residence was identified and we arrived, but we didn't see the activity, we did leave a notice for the, uh, for the residents of that location. So we had extra patrol o- out there as well, and we did receive a call of possible shots heard, but it could have been fireworks as well. Um, but, uh, for, for comparison, in 2022, 54 calls for service, 23, 79, 24, 75. So the numbers remained, um, about the same, not the, not as bad as 2020, 2021, but unfortunately we see, we did receive those several calls for service.
Great. Thank you very much. Oh, go ahead.
I have a question for Chief Reed about the blood donation. Um, do, uh, can people just walk in, or do we need to make an appointment in advance?
That's a good question. They can do both, sorry. Thank you, Brian, for entering that for me.
Thank you.
But I believe, yes, you can just, if you, we contact people during the event and tell them, go on over there and do it, and they'll do it. They can do that as well, so.
Thank you. All right. Marsha, Human Services Department.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I just wanted to invite everyone to join us tomorrow evening from 6:00 to 9:00 PM during our concert series in Alma Hoffman Park for a special vendor fair that includes over 20 community agencies and craft vendors who'll be providing information and selling various crafts such as jewelry, embroidery apparel, crochet purses, dolls, and much, much more. At 7:00 PM, our Latin music band will perform starring Miriam Noblina. Uh, there will also be food trucks and snacks, so bring your family, friends, and lawn chairs to enjoy the music. Our upcoming entertainment includes Cold Duck performing your favorite old-school jams on July 23rd, and to close out the concert series, we will have Mariachi Coachella serenading us with Mariachi favorites on July 30th. All concerts begin at 7:00 PM, and don't forget, there are free kids activities and our splash pad stays open until 8:00 PM on concert nights, too. Our food distribution in partnership with the Community Action Partnership of San Bernardino will also be this week on Thursday, July 18th, from 9:30 AM to 10:30 AM in the Montclair Community Center. Items vary and may include canned meats, canned vegetables, flour, peanut butter, soups, and juices and frozen goods, first come, first served. And we will also have the mobile food pan- pantry courtesy of Feeding America. They'll be here next week on Wednesday, July 24th, from 9:00 to 11:00 on the patio next to our Montclair Recreation Center building. Their food kits also vary and may provide a selection of fruit, juice, vegetables, milk, cheese, grains, and proteins. Again, first come, first served. And I also wanted to mention that our Montclair After School Program, MAP, has an ongoing summer session located at Vernon Middle School from July 8th through July 26th. It operates from 12 to 5:00. It's for students who are enrolled in the Ontario Montclair School District, grades, uh, first grade to seventh grade. This summer's theme is MAP University, where students are exploring the world of colleges through fun on-hands activities. And there's still room if anybody wants to join the summer session for the last couple of weeks. MAP is also enrolling for transitional kindergarten, kindergarten, and first through eighth grade for the 2024 school year for Buena Vista, Elderberry, Mona Vista, Kingsley, Lehigh, and Ramona Elementary Schools, as well as Vernon Middle School. Online applications and more information can be found at montclarafterschoolprogram.org. And finally, our co-ed youth volleyball program registration for children in fifth through eighth grade or born in the year 2011 to 2014 is ongoing now through August 2nd in the Recreation Center. The cost is $30, and our Recreation Center is open, uh, to take these registrations Monday through Friday from 7:30 AM to 7:00 PM. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Marsha. Regarding Mayor, I'd like to begin saying I will not be present at the next August 5th meetings, I will be on, um, on a tour, a boat trip in, uh, in Europe. Um, second of all, goal line, um, first of all, I, I want to state that it was a tour last week, which Councilmember Rue and City Manager Starr and myself participated in. I know we all heard about the articles, senior articles in the paper regarding the goal line and the funding of goal line, and I want to recognize SBCTA President and also Chino Hills Councilmember Ray Marquez. He has also got involved in the discussions of goal line and talking to both the Goal Line Construction Authority and also with the SBCTA staff, um, regarding his projects. I appreciate his, uh, his involvement and his hard work. I also want to announce that, uh, at Omni Trans, um, which is agencies, I remember the joint, uh, committee or, uh, JPA, um, first of all, the West Valley Connected Project that's currently under construction, um, they just received, uh, the first bus for that line, it's an electric, electronic bus, uh, 40-foot bus, and, uh, I had, I had an opportunity to, uh, go on the bus and visit, see the bus in San Bernardino. And at the same time, Omni Trans just got their first four hydrogen fuel cell buses, these four buses are demonstration buses. And also, again, these were, uh, available at Omni Trans facilities, so if you'd like to get a chance to see them, let me know, and I'll be more than happy to, uh, schedule a visit for you. Also, the SBCTA, you probably read an article, um, the first fuel cell hydrogen light rail train has finally arrived in San Bernardino as part of the Arrow, uh, the Arrow align that goes through San Bernardino and Relins, and I had a chance to visit that. Actually, I saw that, uh, train, uh, last year in Orlando at a transit conference. And then on July 9th, uh, every, last week, uh, I participated in a homeless summit, uh, that was a homeless summit with the seven mayors, uh, starting for City, City of Fontana West, along with the city managers. It was a very productive meeting to really discuss, um, on, on the West San Bernardino region, how the seven cities and the county of San Bernardino can work together to better, um, manage the homeless, uh, issues that we're facing. So, um, we'll probably have another meeting at a future date, and this second meeting most likely will be with the county of San Bernardino, uh, for the, for the discussions. Lastly, I want to do this. I want to condemn the assassination attempt that took place on, um, former President Trump, who's also a candidate. I'm going to condemn all the rhetoric, the conspiracies, and everything else that's been said. This is under investigation right now, and the best thing you can do, the American people do is remain calm. I'm also going to praise President Biden for taking leadership as the President of the United States, and, um, I'll end with this. We have two choices. We can either be the United States of America, or we can be the divided states of America, and I hope it's the, uh, the former. So with that, I'll start with Councilmember Rue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, excuse me. I've been told I missed some people, so City Attorney, do you have anything to say? Okay, how about the City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, you covered it all.
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Rue.
On July 17th this week, at 10:00 AM, Panera will have their grand opening and their ribbon cutting. This is something that has been well anticipated and I believe will be well received by most of the community. It will be up by the Target Shopping Center, I think most of you already know that, but it'll be a good addition to the city and look forward to it. The mayor has already mentioned the Gold Line Tour that he and I were on along with the city manager. Many, many people attended. We had reps from the different legislative branches. Congressmember Torres sent somebody, Senator Susan Rubio, and Assemblymember Freddie Rodriguez from the, uh, representing Montclair all had representatives there. All were very, very pleased to see what is going on, the progress that's being made. We started at Azusa Pacific University and went all the way over to Pomona to see the various stations, the progress, and essentially how they're going to be operating. Yes, they will have Fair Gates. Uh, I have a tap card, I use it quite a bit, I'm used to doing it a certain way. It'll change just a little bit, but it won't take me that long to get used to it. So that's a, uh, positive progress for the Gold Line. Mr. Mayor, if I'm correct, they're saying it should be to Montclair by roughly 2031? I'm not going to hold my breath, but something like that?
That's what they say, 2031. If we can start this in 2025.
Yeah, something. So we'll see, and I know our neighbors in Claremont are just as excited as we are as good to see most of the Claremont Council there, and they've been true neighbors and friends on this, as have every city in LA County. I'm glad to hear the chief had a report on July 4th. Nothing really in my neighborhood for, I did have a few neighbors who were wondering where the booming was coming from, and I said Cable Airport has a show, Pomona College has a show, and there's one at the Fairplex, so that's where the noise was coming from. My street was quiet. I appreciate that. I'm glad to see that the SBCTA will be using hydrogen fuel cell. I think that's the way to go for the future. Many of you know I've been somewhat critical of electric, not because it's a bad idea, but the lithium in the batteries, if it leaks into the water stream and even through the groundwater, contains lithium, and lithium is a forever chemical, and that has to be, uh, cleaned at great, great expense. I along, and I'll echo the mayor's words on events that have been happening, there is no room for hatred. We've gone through this too much in this country. In our short history as a, as a nation, we've had four presidents assassinated and numerous attempts on many, uh, people running for office and who were presidents. We have to bring the rhetoric down. We have to bring the noise down. There are people I disagree with in the political system, there are elected officials I disagree with, but I would never go to that extreme, nor would I ask some of the things that have been said in the last few weeks. I've heard people, somebody on television making a comment, and this is an elected official saying Liz Cheney should be executed. This just builds up the hatred. We can all have our opinions, we can agree to disagree. We are now looking at Europe as our model. France and England both had elections in the last two weeks. Very quiet elections, they had some changes in government, it was smooth, it's what it should be. The world is looking at us, and we need to be able to bring down the rhetoric, bring down the hate, stop calling each other names. We're blaming people, let's not put the blame on anybody. Let's just turn around and bring it down. Let's go back to being a civilized nation that we used to pride ourselves on. Thank you. Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, thank you for the brief impromptu report on the, uh, Fourth of July activities. I was, uh, not in Montclair that night, I was in Upland with family. Uh, as I shared last council meeting, our family has been dealt with, uh, my mother's side, has been dealt with a series of blows, uh, where we've had relatives either in and out of the hospital or those that have passed on, and on that night I had to be with family. So I wasn't able to enjoy anything, uh, celebratory on the Fourth, but it's good to hear that, uh, PD was out there doing the best that they could, so convey my appreciation, uh, to the officers. A celebratory, uh, comment, I just would, he had mentioned or alluded to this on July 1st at the meeting, but I just would like to, uh, wish a belated happy anniversary to the mayor and his wife, Anne Dutray, on your, your nuptials and, and your years of marriage, and may God bless you with many, many more. Uh, hopefully you enjoyed your little, uh, trip. I think you guys went wine tasting or something, or up the coast?
Yeah, we went to, uh, to Salvang, um, Salvang, Avila Beach, Pismo Beach, Los Lejos, Santa Barbara.
I think you're wise, because I'm sure being on the coast is a lot cooler than it was here, so, uh, too bad you didn't invite the rest of us to enjoy the cooler weather. And, uh, just on the, uh... And just on the, on the general comment, I will concur with my comments from the mayor and my colleague to my right, Mr. Rue, as far as no matter what your disagreement is with any elected official, to wish them ill will to the point where you wish them bodily harm, or death, or anything in between is uncalled for. I mentioned this two weeks ago, getting some comments, folks were telling me that people were saying that I deserved what I got for having relatives die on me, and just the, the hatred and vitriol by some is uncalled for. You can agree to disagree, and you should do it civilly, but beyond that, it's, it's uncalled for, and I don't care if you like or hate Donald Trump, the attempted assassination is uncalled for, just like it would be uncalled for, and unnecessary, and dead wrong if it happened to Joe Biden or any other candidate or any other president now or in the future. So with that, I will end my comments, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just have a couple of things. First, I want to talk about Panera Bread, the, yes, we are having the ribbon cutting on the 17th at 10 o'clock, but they're actually opening on the 17th at 6:00 AM, and I think that they have scheduled, they've scheduled the chamber to be at 10 o'clock, so that's between the breakfast rush and the lunch rush.
Their website says they're opening at 10, so they need to fix it.
Well, we have, yeah, they need to fix it. I have a video with the manager saying it's at 6:00, 6:00 AM, so, but if you come, there are, will be.
How's it then?
No?
Don't want to show up at 6, and it's nobody there.
But if you go to the ribbon cutting at 10, there will be some goodies distributed, and so they are asking us to make sure that people RSVP so they can have enough free food for everybody, so if you're planning on attending, please RSVP to the Montclair Chamber of Commerce at events@montclerchamber.com. The next thing I want to talk about is the shop local program here in Montclair. The Chamber of Commerce has been working closely with the city's economic development department to make sure that once a person shops in Montclair, they keep shopping in Montclair. So we've had, we do quarterly raffles where somebody will win $75. We've had, we've done two. The first quarter, there was a Montclair resident who sent us 33 receipts and received, so there were so many businesses that she had been to, and we asked her which one she wanted to showcase, and she wanted Szechuan Garden, so guess what she got? She got a $75 gift card to Szechuan Garden. That same person, in the second quarter, sent 53 receipts, and she won, so I said, okay, now which one? And she said, well, Starbucks on Central, and so she won a $75 gift cards to Starbucks on Central, and you, some of you probably saw the videos and the, on social media. So I would encourage everyone who lives and or works in Montclair, if you make a purchase in Montclair, we want you to go back to that place. So if you go to XYZ Restaurant in Montclair, we don't want you to go to a neighboring city, we want you to come back to that restaurant. So whether you live here or you work here, if you, if you make a purchase in Montclair, please send a copy of your receipt to events@montclerchamber.com, E-V-E-N-T-S, at montclerchamber.com to enter you into the raffle. So it's a fantastic program, and we're hoping to just build a business here in Montclair. And then, next, next thing is the, some of you may have remembered the Night Under the Stars at Chino Basin Water Conservation District last year, and last year, it was a black tie event that was very well attended, and we had, heard only positive comments. This year, it is August 29, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, again, at Chino Basin Water Conservation District, but this year, it is a luau theme, so bring your luau, wear your luau gear, gear to that event. Lastly, as we move into our election season, not just the federal election, but the local election as well, I am remaining prayerful that it will be a calm, clean election, no ugliness, just people doing what they need to do. Mr. Mayor, that concludes, concludes my comments.
Thank you very much, and then finally is Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you. I just want to say a big congratulations to everybody for the major news on the Gold Line, A-line, is it Gold Line still, A-line now?
It's A-line, technically it's A-line.
Okay. A-line. It's been a long time coming, and there was a lot of hard work and heart and soul poured into that, and I know I came in at the tail end of it, but I'm going to take some of the credit for it, too, because I'm here, so I can't.
Well, there's more work to be done, there's, there's some, several agreements, I mean, are still in negotiations.
Fantastic steps, yes.
So we're not quite there yet, and we still got to see what the bids are, got to make sure there's a $250 million check, well, first, a $500 million check is supposed to be delivered already, there's supposed to be a $250 million check from the state delivered at the end of the year, this calendar year, from state to metro, and then, and then the agreement itself, which Ed knows all about, so, all right.
And that's all happening.
Thank you.
It's all going to happen. And then the other thing is, this Saturday, there was a fifth year anniversary of the Pomona Valley Pride Center, which is incredible if you think about it. Five years ago, July of 2019 was right before COVID started, so considering they started right before COVID, and they managed to keep the Pomona Valley Pride Center afloat for five years, and they're still around, they've had three different locations, and their new one is, is really nice, it's a good resource for our residents to go and do homework and just have a place to exist. There's a closet for anyone who needs clothing, there's food, a food pantry as well, and there's resources there, so it's something that's not available locally, other than maybe in an educational setting, so kudos to them for being able to stay afloat for the last five years. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Ben, you have something else?
Yeah, just, just to follow up, can you share where we are with the Mona Vista Freeway? Mona Vista and the freeway, I know the repaving of the underpass is done, are we on schedule to open it maybe next week or so?
I don't know, I've been out of town, so I know it was shut down Friday night.
Yes.
And I believe Saturday night, if I'm correct, so they paved it, though, actually, Monica probably has a better answer than I do.
Thank you.
Good evening, I can give an update on that, actually, tonight, they're going to do the final striping of what they currently paved. The areas that you see are not the final paving limits of the project, we're working with them to extend it to, from all the way to San Jose to the north, and to the south to San Bernardino, so it's not completely done, just FYI.
Thank you for that, that's encouraging that it might go to San Bernardino Street.
Yes, we're discussing that.
Very much needed, great, thank you.
Striping, striping will be a little better, I think, because I know some of the comments was made on social media last week, the striping, and keep trying to tell people it's only temporarily.
Exactly.
And we can go back and close the lanes all, back into one lane in each direction, I don't think anybody would be very happy with that, too, but we're almost there, Matt knows what I'm talking about. All right, so with that, we again want to apologize to our city attorney and our city manager for not recognizing them earlier under communications, and with that, we have committee minutes, and with that, we adjourn, thank you.